Excellent. Okay, thank you everybody for the wait. Good evening, this is Mary Decourcy. I am the Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm calling our Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order at 6:05 on Wednesday, November 6, 2024. This is an open meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being recorded by the Auburn Public Library, in the Marion Room, sorry. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Vision. Is anyone else here recording the meeting? The agenda for this meeting was posted on the Auburn Town website on Monday, November 4, 2024. Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on our agenda are present this evening. Matt Toth, absent, he was unable to join us, so he is watching through ACTV in Florida. Hi, Matt. Erica Briesaker?
Present.
Vera Crane?
Present.
Nan Johnson?
Present.
Lindsay Baker?
Present.
And I too, Mary Decourcy, am present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dora Vecchio, who's the Assistant Town Manager and the Director of Human Resources?
Present.
Excellent, thank you for being here. The first item, first of all, I want to say thank you for being here before we begin. I just want to say just publicly, Ed and Dory have done a wonderful job supporting the Library Board of Trustees, kind of moving us forward, so I just want to acknowledge that. And she's here this evening at our request to report out on some progress that we'll be learning about, so thank you again for being here. We are going to review minutes on the agenda. It says August, I don't believe we had an August meeting. That was my typo. We'll be looking at meetings from September 2024, October, and our joint meeting. So if everybody could take a few minutes and let me know if you need the minutes, and we could just look at them over.
The September 4 joint meeting.
Yeah, I was just noticing that. So I have October 2.
Right, I, you had said you were doing September and the joint meeting because I wasn't at October.
Oh, that's my fault, so I will have that one.
I just was like, did I miss it?
I think I misspoke, so I apologize. To clarify, we're reviewing the October 2, 2024 minutes. I faux pas, I was supposed to produce the others. My mistake, I apologize. So do I have a way to approve the October 20, October 2, 2024 minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, great, thank you Nan, do I have second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna do a quick roll call. Matt Toth, absent, Erica Briesaker?
Yes.
Vera Crane?
Yes.
Nan Johnson was the initial. Lindsay Baker? Mary Decourcy, yes, so we have unanimous. The next item, and I will have those for the next meeting, which will be in December, I apologize for that. The next is, we have space for public comment, and we have, it doesn't look like we have anyone here for the public comment, so we are going to move on to the next, which is, again, Dory Vecchio, thank you for being here today. We did reach out and ask you to give us an update on the library director search, progress, changes in staffing, and any other things related to the library that you'd like to share and allow the board to ask questions.
Great, thank you so much. There is a lot going on. I've been in the library for a month. It's been a great month. The staff here is extremely knowledgeable. I was talking to Nan, she was in an interview with me earlier today, and I want to say that she offers just a wealth of information for these interviews, I'm so grateful that she's there. We did have our first interview today for head librarian. We have another one tomorrow, two more tomorrow, and I have another gentleman I'm meeting next week. I'm trying to set that up, and there might be two on five or six.
Wow, awesome.
And it was today, it was the first round of interviews. I don't know if we're gonna have a second. We'll have to see if we need a second. There's a lot of questions that we ask. We tried to get to the new day of the direction this new library director wants to go. We want someone here that is not only qualified, but it fits into what we already have. Someone who has experience in some of the things we need that can add a lot. And the questions today were a range of all of those things, and I thought it was a very successful interview. So that's where we are for the head librarian. I'm hoping first round of interviews will definitely be done by next week, and then I think we need to determine if there's a clear cut, someone above the rest, or if we need to cut it down to and have second interviews, and if that's the case, I will advise the board. Staff changing, now this is, to be transparent, we were working on staff changes at the library prior to a month ago when I spent time here. In my time here, I've just seen a lot of what people actually do on a day-in, day-out basis, and it's extraordinary. We have an amazing staff here. I'm so proud to be working with them, to get to know them. One of the things that we did do that was in the process prior to me coming on was, there's two admins, the two admins, Molly and Dave. Those positions are staying the same, but yet their salaries are getting into a more competitive area. We could lose them in a heartbeat if we didn't do that.
Agreed.
I still think, and I have spoken to the town manager, that it does need to be looked at again for July 1. And that increase goes back to July 1 of this year, so there'll be some retro.
Love it.
To be honest with you, because of my lack of experience in libraries, I have a lot of management experience. They are running the library. They are giving me their opinions and their thoughts and their processes, and they are just amazing in what they're coming up with. They deserve it, all of this and more, I have to say. Yes.
We've been saying that for a long time.
And to be honest with you, one of them said they knew I wasn't feeling good. They're like, I will go, I'll go to the Board of Trustees meeting.
That's awesome.
They didn't mind coming, it's just, it's just a good.
Culture climate.
We have a good dialogue, we talk about issues and concerns. We have a big thing about teamwork.
Excellent.
So yeah, that's one of the things we did. The other thing I did do this week is, we have a library associate that actually applied for senior library associate and was put in as the library associate, instead of the senior. That's been corrected, and that goes retro back to July 1 as well. I will be, I can't share too much about this, but you guys understand the collective bargaining process. I will be making recommendations to their union to resolve some of the other issues that I see. I don't feel based on, I know the town manager has spoken to the union, had a great conversation with them, and that we feel that moving forward, we're just gonna have a great relationship, and they're gonna work with us to help achieve what we want to do with our staffing here. So the other thing is, I advertise for a library associate. We have two vacant positions. Once I moved one of the employees up, that made that position open. So I have two regular library associate positions open. I got 80 resumes. I whittled it down to like 40, and now I just did a spreadsheet this week to literally look at factual things, like degree, customer service experience, like break it down into tangible items that you're looking for in a person like this. And Molly and David have been integral in adding their feedback in what type of person needs to be in these positions, because I don't know, you know, that's not my area of expertise. But they offered a wealth of information, and I'm really excited at some of the candidates that we are getting. So in the next, for the next meeting, I hope to have two library associates.
Excellent.
Yes, I don't, we do have an open deputy position. I spoke to the town manager, we want to wait on that for the director to come in. We do have a children's librarian that's budgeted in this positioning for $20,000, but that is, that's sort of like a part-time, it's like, that I'm not gonna touch either. We need to look, we need a whole assessment of the library, but I need to at least get the staffing up to where it should be, so that if someone's sick, they can actually not come to work. I should talk right.
Can I just share something that I observed? That is a huge change, like the library shelves are filled. The place is looking really great.
I just want to share that.
I did a nice walkthrough, as I do for every meeting. It looks great. It looks cheery, it looks positive. I like the way things are situated. It just, it looks more like a library, like a thinking space, like a hub. We talked about the hub in our strategic plan. It should feel like a lively place, but where people can also concentrate if they need to.
Yes, looking good.
I did have to speak to a couple of children earlier. It's a lot of fun over there. I'm like, guys, what are you playing with? Just because they get a lot. And it is a smaller space, and there are people doing work, but I love it here. I wish I got more than library sooner, but I'm glad that in my position, I'll always be working with libraries, especially hopefully this one. I love it. So those are the staffing, those are my staffing updates I wanted to give you. I have a lot of updates, if you want me to go into the director's report. That, I don't know how those were done in the past, so I just did updates, my director's reports. Before you move on to that, does anybody have any questions that you'd like to ask? Because you're doing a great job, this is so exciting, and I'm so excited to hear that the team is given, first of all, the support that they deserve, but also the compensation, because that's something that, as a board for the last five years, we have, we know that they need to grow, and we don't want to lose them. So this is really exciting. Does anybody have anything? Go ahead, Erica.
How many is a full staff currently? To be full staff.
So I am still trying to determine that, because just for instance, we have two people on a Saturday. This past Saturday, we had one person that wasn't feeling well and came in just like 10 minutes late. Well, we had a program. So my question with management is like, okay, what do we need? Is two staff enough? No, okay, it's not enough. Is three enough? We used to have four. Okay, let's talk about where we come. So exactly, I don't know, but we're working together to figure it out, because each day's different. Some nights are busier than others, some weekends are busier than others if we have programming. And they have so much knowledge, like, yeah, we used to have four. I'm like, okay, tell me how that worked. And they explained it, and I'm like, well, that, doesn't that make sense? Like, because if someone's sick, shouldn't they be able to call them sick? And we had a children's program, and we have someone sick. So I don't want to, I just don't want that. And they appreciate it too. And so I don't know. I don't know what it looks like yet. I look forward to working with the new director on that, to see, you know, we had a lot of questions today about determining which demographics need to be represented more, determining, like, how do you figure that out? So there's just so much that needs to be done, that's super exciting, that will actually lead to the answer to that. Great, so hopefully, I don't know when, but hopefully in the next few months, depending, so.
I just have a comment, I've been getting feedback. I have not been here, but I've been getting feedback about what a nice vibe there is, and how great it is to walk in and, you know, see the different staff interacting with each other, the way they're interacting with people who walk in, looking for staff, just, there is a lightness and an airiness that makes it very welcoming.
Great, super.
They are really good people, and they want to do the right thing.
Yes, they do.
And one of the things that, and I'll talk about it more in my report, is cross-training. You need to know what the other one's doing, right? You need to work together. So that alone, they're building stronger relationships. They're learning that there's coverage and backup, and not everything's on one person's shoulders. And they are so in tune with patrons and their needs and the areas that they go to, and the CDs and DVDs, and I'm like, really? They're like, yeah, well, that group goes out all the time, like, they do? So they got, they got the pulse of it. They do, and I don't, but I'm not the library person, but I'm thrilled to see they do, and they have great ideas. So I think you're seeing that because we're, I'm using some of their ideas because I don't know, so they have to tell me. And a lot of times they're like, I don't know. I'm like, I think you do. Let's talk about it, because I know I don't know. Exactly.
Having a voice at the table.
Yes, yes.
Wonderful, thank you. And anybody else? No, that was great, thank you so much, Dory.
Okay, so updates, we have a lot going on. And it's interesting, because these are areas I never thought I would learn about. We have CDs. Who knew? We have way too many CDs. We weeded through the CDs. We have a thousand less CDs than we had a month ago. So just to give you just a little bit, I'm gonna go through what I wrote, but just to get a little understanding of what the staff and I have been working on, is we heard the board loud and clear, we heard the residents loud and clear about periodicals, a lot of space to come to that's welcoming, that's comfortable. So we watched back and forth, up, down, over, looked at our units, looked at what makes sense, where things could be, where things could be moved, where a periodical section would thrive. So this is what we've done. We have weeded through the CDs. They were taken off the wall in the back already. I have DPW is going to fix that wall so it looks like it was never touched, because at one point, they had to do a lot of work with the concrete. That is in the process, I've worked with DPW on that. Within the next four to six weeks, we are going to have CD, they're like stands, specifically for CDs, delivered. Those CDs, we're gonna put them over by the DVD section, so they're gonna be more in an area where they should be. They've been weeded. We're replacing some of the ones that we need to replace. There are some that are used a lot. So we have a really good handle on what we have now, but we did reduce it by about 1,000 that just haven't gone out in three years. Three years. So that was the first thing. The periodicals. We are working on the new periodical section. We have ordered three brand-new periodical stands. The kind of stands that you can look at and you see the periodical, and if you look behind it, you've got the prior month behind it. It holds, I think they hold 48 titles in addition to what we already have, which I think we're gonna place strategically around the library, because not everyone's gonna want to be in that area. So we have to sort of figure out how that works. And I think once it's set up, we'll see where people wander. But we want to put back in that stage, that area where the CDs are, that's where these really nice shelving units that match sort of the wood that we have in that area now, those will be going up, and there's three. And there's also a spot there that we might be able to do the library of things. So it leaves a little bit of extra space there. So those have been ordered, just like the CD shelving, and hopefully within the next four to six weeks, all of that will start coming together, and you'll see those changes right in the library. Yeah, we used the list of periodicals that the board had helped us with, and also the information that came from social media. So right now, we got, I think, 10 out of the 12 that the board had recommended, but we're also looking at, there was a group of others that aren't as popular, but you can tell that people might be interested in. I want to at least get them and see if they get used. Like, let's see if people want these. They were recommended through some sort of social media or whatever, and maybe we'll do a survey to get like, to nail it down. But those, a lot of those don't start, I guess, you have to order periodicals at a particular time of year, January? For the year? So all those are gonna start being infused into the library in January. It is actually really good timing. And they've been ordered, all the periodicals are ordered too. So it is, it is really, it is really exciting. And being here every day, I watch what, you watch what people do. They come in, they read their newspaper. They like to feel the book, they like to feel that, they're gonna like the periodicals.
Finally, back.
They're gonna like, yeah. And so I want to see how that works. Some things may not work, you know, some particular ones and others, and we can fluctuate with that need. But that's the plan right now. Programs have been a challenge, because there were no programs a month ago. So we have, Professor Bugman came in. He was in it, spoke to him personally. Little Sparks Theater, 40 Wax. The Lizzie Borden case came in, he was amazing. He's coming back, he's coming back for another one. It's called 1620, the First Year Historical Presentation. So he's coming back, so that's exciting. We have the Adult Book Club. We reestablished a young adults, yeah, it's a young adult reading book club. I met with a young girl and her mother, and they established this reading club in the Auburn Public Library over the summer. And for some reason, they thought that it ended. I met with them, she told me her idea of it. This is how I see it, this is how, it's me and my friends, and there's six of us, or seven of us. So we talked about it, we are opening it up to the public. These kids will be in each one. They work with my staff to get books, they choose the books, we get the books for them, they have their. This is how we build our future. Like, it's really an exciting, it started in the summer, and it's picked back up now. So that is one really good thing I'm excited about. We still have the friends, the friends come, and the knitters use the Marion Room, which, they're lovely. I'm like, I want to knit. Okay, we're also looking at additional programs. Those are in the form of our, the staff imaginations and thought processes. And we have a lot of things in the works that you're gonna start seeing pop up. I don't want to tell you now, they haven't been advertised, but they're gonna be a lot of fun, things that haven't been brought here before, that bring in different age groups, which is definitely something we want to do, so you'll see more of that. Technology, so as the acting library director, who has no library experience, this was fun. We were notified by Eventkeeper, who is our reservation system, that we had seven days to get all our data from our reservation system, because they were closing, and we weren't gonna be able to use them anymore. So luckily for us, we still have it, even though it should have stopped the end of October. We have done outreach, I've got a new company called Alcivet. They're fairly local. They will actually, and I've met with them, we have a telephone interview with them and staff to talk about policies and procedures and what this library needs and wants. And it includes, not only the reservation system, but it includes a portion for the library of things. So it's actually a much larger program than we have now. So that is in the works, hopefully by the next meeting, that will be up and running, and we'll be able to provide you additional information on that. But yeah, it was almost like, okay, let's find a new one. And we did. The other thing my staff, they were talking about, which I thought was really fun, is we have the children's area, which is amazing. Parents don't have a lot to do in there. So one of the people, one of the people that worked for me were like, why don't we set up a computer in there? So maybe they want to work, maybe they want to check their emails. So we spoke to IT, and we're getting a desk in both areas for parents so that they can be, sometimes they come out here and they leave their kids, and they have to run back and forth. So they're more in with their children. So we're gonna see if that works. We already have the computers, we have the desks, that'll be in the next month or so. But that was an idea of someone that works here that sees the dynamic of the parent.
Well, as a frequent user of it, it's very nerve-wracking because the entrance is right, is the first, and I've got a very fast four-year-old who would get nervous if we lost eyesight, and not that he's a runner, but he, there was a chance, and those doors opened real easy.
There's been a couple of runners.
Yeah, and it's very, it's very, it makes it uneasy leaving him in there to even just step out to look at the, you know, piano.
And the staff here is very, very aware.
They're so vigilant, but.
They catch him.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm so appreciative, but like, they're not here to babysit, but also it makes it really hard, because you have no mobility, because you obviously are gonna leave your kid to potentially.
So hopefully that helps this situation.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And we'll consider other options too, because there's enough space there so that the parent can be with their child.
I wonder, I wonder, do adults have comfy chairs? The wrap, or anything like that? I like the office in the corner. The empty corner.
Not a bad idea, I think I have some in mind.
So that's technology that we've been working on. That's more programming. So collection, and you guys have already noticed, in the last month, we've ordered 472 new titles. The majority were in adult fiction. It includes a concerted effort to beef up our science fiction section that has been reduced over the years due to age and whatnot of the, of the books that were there. We've had some people come in and ask us and say, I had one woman say to me, and it was so heartfelt, Auburn was the place I went. I go to all the libraries, and Auburn was science fiction, and now it's gone. And I'm like, it's so funny you say that. And we had already been talking about it. So we have a new system in place for our new books that was never done before, and in some cases, they get out the same day they come in. I know, they're amazing, and the teamwork and how they do things and the way they communicate is amazing. You'll see, I don't know, I didn't know a lot about this, but if you walk around the library and you see like a November, it's a, like, it's a bright, like, orange, it says NOV, that's a brand-new book, just came in. So if you walk around, I started doing it, I'm like, ooh, that's new, ooh, that's new. They've established a new way to actually code the books, because you want to be able to weed them over time, you want to know when they come in. I guess in the past, it was little dots that were confusing on which dot meant what. But they've developed a new process that makes it easier for them. So, yeah. They've also added a lot of DVDs, because for the past several years, people still watch DVDs, and they come here, and there's nothing new. And I had an employee keep track of it. And all those things that were requested, we now have. Like, they're in, they're in. And the idea, and I said to them, and they love this, because they're here to help people, and they want to be able to say, yes, we have it, is to keep track of the requests. We're gonna try to do, actually, one of them said they thought it was a problem. They wrote it down for me as a problem, but it's not a problem. The problem was is that we ordered all the new books that people want, so we don't need to, we don't order them again. So either it's being rented, which, that's not a problem. But they see, it's just their thought process. We've already ordered it, I'm like, that's good. So that's, eBooks is the same, pretty much the same. We're doing that, one to two orders a month. They're listening to the people coming in. We've got some books, and most of the books are in adult fiction, science fiction, biographies, nonfiction, some young adults and some juvenile. They have a whole new system for DVDs. There's a red sticker, new program on the spine, if you see it. They've established that for a way to be able to track them efficiently and to be able to weed through them. They recently did that on their own. We had Gumdrop Books come in, and we, he set up in here, and all the staff are involved. In fact, the friends were here that day too. I asked them if they wanted to just offer their thoughts on it, but we're able to look through books right now, right in front of us, and see what do we need out there. Like, I don't have the expertise, because I haven't been here long enough, but they knew, like, oh, we have something about this, but we don't have something about this. So we had someone, and I guess that's happened before in the library, so that was a lot of fun. So they came in, we're waiting for that order to come in. DVDs, 46 titles, $8,000 in books. Programs have been good, library of things. I have a list of 22 library of things that I have ready to purchase, that we have funding for, and I have 10 to 12 board games on top of that that I just found out today are a big thing, very important for a library of things. In addition to what we had before, which were, I think you guys received it in your last newsletter. So my thought, I'm working with staff and developing processes and procedures. I've done outreach to other libraries. It is very detailed, and it needs to be properly managed. We are getting the space for it, and we're getting set up for it. To the point where, when, say someone wants to borrow a game, you need to make sure that all those game pieces are secured in a particular container. We need those containers, we need someone to count those, you know. So there's a lot of things that. We need those containers, we need someone to count those, that they, you know, so there's a lot of things that um, go along with the library of things. But we are moving along and we're open to suggestions, so if anyone out there has any suggestions. Um, it's a wide variety of home improvement things, um. I do have someone who specializes, or it's like a music teacher who gave me some ideas on some musical instruments that we might be able to do because. I didn't wanna get like the lower end musical instrument, that's not gonna help the child who's trying to learn how to use it, or even the adults. So, that's the library of things, so we're moving along on that. Um, we have started, I don't know if you guys ever get a chance, but after the meeting you should look, we started clearing up the whole back area. So, we have, um, staff has emptied, I I would say fifteen at least, they're tall shelves. That were everywhere, um, inventoried them, put them away, disposed of the things that can't be used or broken, shouldn't be used. And it is um, a very comfortable working environment, it's, it's, yeah, it's good. Um, we did have a team meeting, we call it that, of the two, actually the four full-time staff and myself. And the new expanded children's area, there is a plan for furniture in there, the friends are involved, um, I know they. There, I think there's some funding through the friends. Um, that was, the process had started before I got here, but as a team, we sort of worked out what made sense. For that age group, um, what we already had, because some of it's not out there. Cause you wanna complement what we have back here and we're putting out, um, and hopefully we'll have that ordered before our next meeting, we definitely will. I just wanna make sure that everyone's on the same page, because I like to let things sink in for a few days, cause as you walk through that space, I was like, oh, that's not gonna work. Oh, that would work, so, so that we're really close to that. Um, one of the other really cool things that I learned about, that I didn't know about, I don't know if you've learned about it, is the Library Speakers Consortium. Ever hear about it? I didn't, so I um, called. I did outreach to, um, her name is Shelby Van Pelt, she's the au- author for. Consortium, what's the, um, Remarkably Bright Creatures, very popular book last year, everyone was reading it. I didn't know that, so I did outreach to her team. And I said, I want you to come to, I I want you to come to Auburn, I I want, we need adult programming. Um, after learning the cost, I said, thank you so much for getting that, you're amazing. And they said, well, we do surprise for you, I'm like, I am not gonna insult you, because it's just exorbitant. So I'm like, how are these other libraries doing it, so I did some research, there's a group, a group out there, Library Speakers Consortium. They will work with, they work with a lot of libraries in the area, and they provide these speakers, these speakers are remote. You can have, there's a lot of things you can do, if we sign on with them, we can have. Like a big TV in here and we can set it up and we, there's dialogue, remote dialogue, cause you type in, almost like a Zoom meeting, you type in your questions. And then they, there's interaction, so at the time of the event, or someone can do it at home. Because they sign up for the event and we give them the information where they can actually from their own home, listen to the speaker and. And collaborate with them and talk to them about whatever questions they have. And we'll have access to the eighty speakers, including this woman, that have already spoke. Will get that inventory that we can provide our residents, that they can go on anytime they want and listen. That's the only time though, that there's not really, there's not a dialogue, cause it's over, but at least they have. I never knew about this, I was so excited, um, the cost is not exorbitant, we have the funding, I'm looking to contract. And it would be something that we, we put out there in our newsletter and on our social media and on our webpage. On our event schedule, either we may have it here, but even if we don't have it here, anyone can participate from their home, from their car. Um, and there'll, it'll be a wide range of speakers, mostly adult speakers, in the summer they get some childrens. Like, you'll see a few childrens in the afternoon for the summer program, so. That's that, and then my last, but not least.
Ask a question, can we track the use of that?
Yes, we track the use, it's our information, it is, so it's a company that does this for a lot of libraries. But when you go on, it says Auburn Public Library, you sign up, it's our information that we keep, they don't keep any of it. They don't keep the person, it's, they just require a name and an email address, they don't keep that, they give it to us. It's ours to, we know who's gonna participate and, you know, if there's, so if there's some speakers that aren't as, you know.
Popular or universally.
Right, right, but it's all one price, whether we have one speaker or, you know, there's two to three a month, every month.
That's exciting.
So, yeah, I wanna see how that works. Um, and that was a great question, the last thing is I met with north architects regarding regarding the expansion. We are currently, I also met with staff here and we need a fire suppression system, and we need um, an alarm system. They need to be either integrated into the the Brady Room, I'm gonna call it Brady Room, um, construction. Or done separately, but it needs to be done, so right now I'm waiting for quotes to come back on those. I'll work with the town manager and our TPW and our engineers to determine the best way, based on funding, um, how to get that done. Um, but as soon as that's done, they'll be ready to start specing it out, they have pretty much everything they need. I am looking at doing additional things that might not be costly. The rug really needs to be replaced, if you ask me. It's, it's, it, it. And I wanna try to incorporate things like that, I'm not sure if I can, based on funding, based on, but I feel like if we have to. If we're gonna do this and they're gonna do it in a way that it closes the libraries for the the least amount of time. If there's something that we can incorporate to get a couple of other things done, um, I wanna do that, so that is, we're working on that too.
We're leading a team that's killing it right now.
They are killing it and they're excited and, yeah, it's been a lot of fun.
So, you guys have been really working hard, I have constituent patron questions, but I don't want you to feel like you have to answer anything, but rather. Just things that are coming up, but before I go to them, I wanted to hear from the team, any specific questions to follow up on that wonderful report? Yes, yes.
This is so, so exciting and your enthusiasm is infectious and right. He needed this today, so um, I, the fire sprint, I mean, that just sounds like something. Sounds really safe and nice, um, um, I guess, one thing I've been trying to sort out and and I'll I'll follow up a little bit offline just on the logistics of this. But just in terms of getting that, a little better reporting on like budget to actuals and where do we have room for? And obviously we can look at the trust funds, and it's just money accumulating there, and it's not millions, but it's, it's not nothing. So I guess my my hope and request is that wherever we can partner, so like, chip in on any of this, like especially solid. We we have this like really healthy pool of funds right now.
To be honest, like, I'm trying to wrap, I'm a finance person before HR, and I'm trying to wrap my arms around it. And I'm not there yet, to be able to report on it, but I have a list of accounts. That I need to look at what they're for, when was it for, is it like, what are the requirements of the accounts, are they new, are they old? Um, to, I am not there yet, but absolutely, because just even for the library of things. The list of my items is eight thousand dollars, like, it's not small, but we do have the money to do it. And to do an amazing program, we're very lucky to have that ability, but if we don't have. Control or an understanding of what we have for pots of funding, what we can use, what we can't use, what just has interest, whatever. Then we're in the dark, and I I feel a little bit in the dark.
Yeah, cause I think the the bill's payable is, is interesting, I guess, but it doesn't tell us anything and it's not. You know, I I'm in a a finance institution and I'm thinking about just like, what, what would we care about seeing progress and and. Understanding those pools of fund, because it is, I feel like we're all operating a little blind right now, and so we have these very circular conversations. About potential improvements, and I think the lack of movement was because just, we're all kinda like cat and mouse on the budget thing.
Example is being able to purchase five units, three for periodicals, two for CDs. That match what we have, that are real units for exactly what we need them for, they're not a repurposed unit. That we could actually purchase those, I worked with the chief financial officer, and there are different pools of money that I was able to use. I need to understand those pools more, as recent as today, I talked to her about it, because I I don't have a complete understanding. I think the town manager may, because he dealt with it for so long as his chief financial position before he became town manager. Um, but I need to have better understanding and definitely should be reported to the board.
That'd be great.
So I have some questions, feel free to write those, and again, this is also to the board, but these are things that came to me, both in. Different settings with people live, but also on on uh, social media. A question that comes up is whether we're reassessing our library hours, or days and hours. Another thing that comes up is whether we will reconsider late fees, if we could discontinue them. Um, there's some curiosity about what the initial library of things are that we're investing in. And then this one has been one that is really, really important to me, what is the process? Or the platform, if you will, to get patron feedback, like on a regular basis, like whether that's a. Laptop out front, whether there's surveys that we can allow, but people want, have a lot of feedback. And what happens is on social media, somebody will say something very constructive like this, I thought it was very constructive about late fees. And then they're getting bashed by all these people that just really wanna. Correct, correct, and I, and and another comment that came out, and I brought it right to Dave, uh, was. That the noise level in terms of being able to focus, and he got right on it, but again, people were bashing like, why don't you talk, talk to. And and I had to respond and say, you are, if you bring it, we bring it right to the team, so, this was, this was, this was prior to September.
Real issue, I mean, I myself went out and spoke to young children today, whose parents were right there.
Well, I guess, I, that's been the argument about why would the expansion not have gone to the ceiling and been more soundproof? Because it, kids make noise, like they can't help it, and so I just, I think that's a real question.
And I, I don't know the answer to that.
And a thing that came up in a past meeting with family members that have individuals with disabilities. Sometimes they make more than the average noise, and they and they don't want to feel. They don't wanna feel inhibited for their family, that they can't, they can't participate in something that the average kinder age participates in without feeling self-conscious. So, and that came up at this table at one point.
I wonder if we could, and I'm open to suggestions, because. All this together, like have something on our website that goes specifically to like me as the acting director. For recommendations, comments, concerns, um. Or maybe the town manager, I I guess I don't know who the public is gonna be most comfortable with, and maybe we should, could give them a couple of options. But I agree, I think, I mean honestly, to have someone come up and say, right to my face, your science fiction section used to be amazing. And I'm like, we need you, we need you to tell us this. We need you, and the funny thing is, we were just talking about it, but to have a patron say that was gold. I'm like, we need, they, everyone here that works here knows the importance of what we provide, the taxpayers in Auburn. And honestly, some people outside of Auburn that use the open portal, that's right, we are service, this is, this is what we do. Um, I'm open to any suggestions, I think it's a great idea.
One thought, I mean, uh, you know, he's take the computer out, and there's always the quiet card, and we have this big open, I don't know, it's desks and things. Could there just be a block of time, a few days a week, where there's a couple of hours with this is. Door closed, it's a no talking, no phones, no kids, right, like, like really.
No children in the pool.
But you know, but it's, it's um, it's where you're here, you really want a place to focus. Um, you know, it wouldn't be hard to set up a laptop on even the NIPs, and they're not the fanciest, but it it would just be such a nice thing to offer. Because it is open, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it, you're gonna hear people talking at the circulation desk, so. I don't know, just, I I don't know how frequently this is booked, like for the whole day, every day, but it's such a nice space. Doors, this would be a great quiet space.
And there's ways around it, so it doesn't, we need, don't need to come through here, or do, but we don't have to. Um, I I feel like, since I've been here, that we need, and I know the board has brought it up a million times. But I feel like we need a survey or some sort of a tool. I don't know what that looks like yet, but to get out there to everyone, I want, I want outreach to the school department, to the teens to find out what they want. For our teen area, and the superintendent, and what she thinks that for the teen area, but everyone in town. What do you want from your library, what, what would be helpful for you, is it a room, we had someone this, I think yesterday. Who came in, who needed a quiet space, and we put him in the other room, he did an interview in there. Well, that's a great, that's what we should be doing, like, that's what we need to do.
Find that out in our, um, what do you call it, the the program that we'll be doing, the camp. That's part of that.
It's a huge part of that, and it, you know, one of the things that I know Suzette Dowd had a big role. In sort of coordinating a lot of the feedback, but I think what we've all advocated for, for the past, since I've been on board, is. Are on a regular basis, whether it's quarterly, whether it's, you know, twice a year, being able to open it up to the public, what do we need to do?
Like, what does this place need to look like and feel like for you to come in?
Because things change over time, what you may need last year, you don't need next year, and to keep almost the pulse of the community.
But I would also suggest, I mean, one, giving them multiple streams, right, some people are old school and wanna write it down. Some people are comfortable saying something aloud, some people wanna email. So maybe we put a couple of signs up saying, your feedback matters, help us make this library better.
I agree.
Here are ways to communicate with us, right, and then give them a place to drop paper comments, if they wanna drop paper comments. Cause then they can be anonymous, but say like, we want to hear what you need, let us know in person, you know.
Yeah, your voice matters, like that would be a nice little, nice little, uh, what do we call it?
But I would say your feedback matters.
Yeah, your feedback matters, because it really does.
Yes, it does.
And it's not just me and the way I think, I've been in government my whole life, but these employees, that, this is what they want. You know, they want to know what, and they, and they were the first ones to say, I got a lot of people ask for this DVD. I'm like, then I think you should get it. Like, just to get, just get it, let's get it, you know, people start asking for things, let's make sure that we improve it, but yeah, no, that's all great feedback.
So you said, you ordered twenty-two library of items for the first library of things, can you just talk, just a, no, you don't have to talk about it extensively, but like a couple ideas. Like, what are the library things, I know that the the the, um.
Do you think I brought it?
Wifi hotspot was something that was really popular.
So, um, yeah, we were just talking about that again today, so I heard that T-Mobile provides a hotspot for libraries at a reduced cost. So I'm doing research on that, I did have some issues with IT in regards to renting out um, computers. And that we're still working through, cause their concerns are very valid, very valid, so I need to figure out what other, and I have been in communication with other. Libraries, direct communication, phone calls, um, which have been very helpful, some of the things, um. I wish I did point it out and I forgot it back there.
The Chromebooks, any chance?
No, but Chromebooks did come up as one of the options, as an alternative, actually, you had mentioned it tonight too.
Very durable.
Yes, and and how do we keep them protected from, like, so that definitely, we were looking, we mentioned um, iPads, we mentioned, like. So we have to try to figure that out, there, um, I found out today, there was a really huge demand for board games.
That's so cool. Well, there's, and so then they take up a lot of room.
So, I added on, from that meeting today to to tonight, twelve, board games, and back there, I'm like, what board games do you like? Life, sorry, I like this one, I like Monopoly, troubles on there, so we started, just, so I'm adding all these, these things. Um, we talked about the Switch, which is a game system, so I think I have one or two of those, we talked about, um. I'm sorry, I should've brought it when.
That was adequate, I mean.
The the measuring, I guess, the the um, electronic laser, yeah, so we have some home home improvement ideas. We've got um, a lot of children's things that I think that were there before, that I think will be really fun for people to borrow. Um, but we're looking at the whole range, and we did use the board's list that was presented to me. We're working off that, in addition to what other communities are do doing, and what they're saying is very popular in their communities as well. Um, so, I can provide you the list next time, I didn't order it yet because. I, I feel like I need to learn more about the whole thing and manage. I feel like I need to learn more about the whole thing and managing it as a whole.
Okay.
Because I don't wanna jump into something and not use it.
Right. Like.
Well said.
Is there a lot of demand for like Chromebooks and iPads? Like what do we do?
No, no, no. No, that's what.
Well, that's what we.
And that's where I go back to the survey.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And, but the reason I ask is like, I mean, because well, you know, when we do surveys, it could be one person, it could be five people, but like how many of us are carrying around a powerful little computer in our pocket? It could be a lot.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
So, and those items are really expensive. So can we get an idea from other area libraries, what the utilization is? Cause like.
Yes.
But if you need to have a hotspot in Chromebooks, sure, but it's a big investment if the demand is, if the utilization is low and then we're better off getting board games and like weed whackers for the person who's gonna whack their weeds for twenty a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Weed whackers. That's on there too.
Awesome.
Like we've gone just a whole, it's a whole gamut, um, little embarrassed, I don't have it in front of me, but it's household things. Um.
Awesome.
It's kids' things, it's adult things. It's just, yeah, it'll be fun.
This is exciting.
I, I just feel like I don't want, and when I first started here a month ago, I'm like, sip, getting this. And as I'm learning more about it, I don't wanna rush. Because I don't wanna waste our money. I wanna get the right things. I wanna get what people want. And I wanna be able to manage it properly in regards to if it breaks, who's responsible for what. We do have, I do have a lot of policies that I'm working from, but also like just what you mentioned fees, like, are we, are we gonna go after people for fees? There's gonna be wear and tear. We're not gonna, you know, as a free public library, we're not gonna necessarily go after people for things like that. So don't wanna just jump into, so I can provide you an, an update each month.
And I would encourage you to just to write down, um, Millbury and, um, Webster. They have very active library of things. So any of those questions that you're curious about, it might be a nice conversation. Because they clearly know, they've clearly been doing it for a while and they were able, Vera and I went to visit both. And they were able to just really quickly tell us all of the reality of it that we weren't familiar.
Yeah. And isn't it, it's expensive.
Yeah, it's expensive.
The whole process and manage it, management of the process, storage, the checking, I learned more about it today. You check everything when it comes back and you count the pieces and I'm like, who does that? And then we talked about volunteers again, like so it's just a bigger, it's bigger.
But then even like within the scope of board games, right? We have like trouble and sorry and all of that. But what about the, the more adult yard games, like Teton and all the pieces, you know?
It was just, yes, yes. Those as well, like there needs to be, in all of it, there needs to be a nice even balance.
Yeah.
And we need to have some flexibility. So if someone says, I really would like something like that, then we say, yeah, that makes sense. And I think there's a need in the community to be able to do it.
Right.
Like in budget for this each year and replacement costs as well.
Life be, um, I don't wanna give you any more work to do, but game night, like if there was a teen game night or a family game night that the library hosts, that could be cool.
That would be fun.
I can say there's a games club at the high school, cause my high schooler's in it.
That would be fun. Yes.
And he brings board games from our house and they play all the time. It would be an interesting way to.
Really?
Bring over a high schooler.
See, that's the type of thing that I'm trying to, I want, I would like the teen section, it needs to be improved. But I don't want to make the decision how to improve it and I don't want the staff here to make the decision how to prove it. I want the teens in the town of Auburn to tell me, what would entice you to come here?
Exactly.
When you leave, and my nephew goes to Auburn Public Schools now, it's his first year in ninth grade. Why do you go to Dunkin's and sit there and do your homework? Why do you, or, or McDonald's? Yeah, you're gonna grab something. Why don't you come to the library? I wanna know why. What do you need?
It's like, yes.
Because I'm, I mean, I want more traffic here. I want people to use the library.
Yeah. My son comes here when he's not in music.
Oh, really?
Will come here and started coming here as a freshman, cause he could walk across the street.
Yeah.
To get some homework done, sit around, do, you know, do some reading. Some of his friends started to come with and then, you know, when there's activities, it's more difficult, but it was, he did like it. It's just a matter of like, if that becomes more common.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Word on the street, yeah. Yep. But, and there were some things in progress in regards to the teen area. I think they were putting up, this was decided way before me, a TV that there was some interactive type thing. But what I did notice myself, cause I like to walk through, is sometimes you'll see a teen in there and the way the seats are set up, there's like, it's like a flat, like a bench seat and then a table and then you have two seats across. They don't want, they don't know anyone else. They move the seat somewhere else and no one can sit with them. But they're teenagers, what do you expect? So in knowing that, what do you do to produce a better seating? So that they don't feel like they have to do that. So, and I do have some ideas on that too, so, but yeah.
I will say, I will say, uh, be careful what you wish for. The candidate today said, over a period of a week's time, there could be as many as a thousand seventh and eighth graders pass through the building. So be careful what you wish for. Can you, yeah.
I know. And we, and these candidates have a lens experience. So when I'm working through these things, especially this library of things, I'm thinking, slow down. Someone a lot more knowledgeable is gonna pick this up and run with it. Because it's gonna be something they know much more about than I do, so. But I can still move slowly on it.
But we really appreciate you. I just think it gives a board, we just really appreciate you. We appreciate the fact that you've listened and has listened. Um, we've worked really hard to stay together as a, as a, as a body. And it's great to have everybody empowered to be themselves and to, to have our ideas heard, but also to see the manifest is really wonderful. It just feels, it feels, it feels very, um, loved and thank you for that.
It does. It feels good for us too.
Good.
Like this isn't, I'm not here saying, oh, no, it's fun.
Yes, it is.
And we're having a good time or making positive change.
Yes.
Um, and we're doing everything for the right reasons, which are the residents in Auburn. So it's, it's exciting.
Awesome.
Yeah, this is, it's super exciting to hear about so much progress and so many new
Yes. Right.
Things happening all at once and so much expansion. Like it's been, I'm sure that the community will respond accordingly. So.
Yeah, I'm excited and I wanna hear from them.
Yeah.
Because I will be here, I'm assuming, another month or two.
Yeah.
Which is a long time.
Right.
I can do a lot. I can manage a lot. And it's a long time to get additional stuff done in order and get set up for the new director. For them to succeed. That's what it's all about. The next person needs to succeed, but our residents need to, um, feel welcome and be able to come here and feel comfortable. And the hours, I'm not sure if there's a desire or need, would definitely look at that. I mean, libraries are, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, I recall correctly, I believe this library opens an hour earlier and closes an hour earlier than, than area libraries. And so the feedback tends to be like, wow, we have that hour on the backend. So I guess one of the questions is how much utilization of the library is there in that first hour? Is it like mostly dead or do we actually have a lot of people who turn up?
So, and I can tell you just what I learned today from someone who said they had one resident from there seven to eight o'clock last night when they were working.
Right.
That later, that seven to eight is not, like even the six to seven is not that busy in the library unless you have a program.
Okay.
But we should know.
Yeah, we should know.
There's that, this is just me, this is my perception. When those doors open, you've got your stream, they're coming in for their paper.
They're coming in for their.
People are waiting.
They are coming in here and they're sitting in here and it's constant.
Yeah.
For a while, it's really nice.
Yeah.
Because I've never seen a library used like that. And that's how we should be used.
Yeah.
Why should they have to go buy a paper, which the cost of living, when they can come here, have a great environment and read out, read out paper, they give it back and they leave.
Right. No, and I, if this, if the community utilizes that early hour or one hour early, then it's valuable.
Yeah, but I think we should ask them.
I agree. Hundred percent.
Think we should ask them.
I mean, on the later hours, if people think we close early and we think that, I know there's one day when we stay open later and I don't know if the community knows that. Yeah, like I don't know if people know that.
Yeah, they may not know that. That's, that's about area.
But if we're like that coffee spot in the morning, that's, that's comfortable.
I, it's pretty impressive. Obviously, the kids are in school, so it's an older demographic.
Yep.
And they come in and they read their papers and I wanna beat them. I wanna beat you someday.
Nice. And we have enough papers to.
We have a stack of papers.
I see.
And I, and we have multiple, I'm like, wow, okay.
Awesome. Well, that is awesome. I just, I wanna, um, I know that you provided the bills payable, the schedule. I just, I don't want you to feel like you have to report out, but I just wanted to ask the board if you wanted to look through it, if there's any questions that you have. And Dory, you've been so generous with your time and your preparation. I appreciate it. But is any specific questions?
I did look through it. I, I am usually the one that asks the necky questions, but I.
And if I could just provide some information on how things are purchased.
Okay.
So, and I am an MCPPO, so I'm a certified purchasing agent for the state of Massachusetts. And, um, we have to purchase a certain way. Amazon has always been a struggle for MCPPOs. Because it's not, you know, you don't go to bid, you wanna be able to calculate what you're using, what you need to make sure you get the lowest price. Amazon has what we need at the lowest price, nine times out of ten.
Nice. Awesome.
I know. I don't, like, it's hard because I still believe and trust in the MCPPO process. Of course, it's the bigger construction process and going out to bid and things like that, of course. But, and disposition of things. But the way we order, um, the Ingram Library Services, those are, that's all books. All books. Um, and that has been probably the most fun for the staff. But when we needed, we had this great, did I tell you about the Halloween party?
No.
No, please. I could tell you, it was so much fun.
Wasn't it crazy?
It was joyful and it was insanely packed. It was like over three hundred. And a crowded college party full of five-year-olds. It was a rager. Cause we're having a great time.
They did. They had a great, after we're like, okay, so we need to change the way people come in and where they go and what station they go to. Cause Dory, they get stuck on doors every time. Like, I know. But I have the things that they had to make a decision about. So they had to choose if they wanted this stuffed animal, that stuffed animal, that stuffed animal versus making something.
Yeah.
And they had multiple things that, and it just bogged down the line. So we're like, yeah, that's a good idea. We're gonna spread that out next year. So that, but that's how things work. But it was a success. We had a lot of adults. We had so many kids. Our face painter was amazing. We were able to get her. Um, she was canceled and I called her. She was able to come back and she did a great job. It was a lot of fun. But we had three hundred and five recorded. I'm sure it was at least probably thirty more.
Nice. That is awesome.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
It was fun.
Awesome. Do we have anything else from the board?
Oh, I was just gonna say, go Amazon. If that's like the best price, it's the best price.
Absolutely.
You know?
It's fast, it's convenient. We've got an account through the town of Auburn. Because part of the problem is ordering something when someone's not taking a purchase order. I personally have given my credit card out many times and I do it, I don't like it. I don't like it because I, I'm on the other end on the fiscal side, I don't think employees should have town credit cards. So I use my own. So Amazon helps with that. It makes it not so difficult. I still use my credit card in some instances, but it's just because you can easily look online with prices everywhere and you can see what it costs to have it shipped from one location versus Amazon. And the way they are structured now in our communities with Upsbridge and Worcester and Charlton, we're right in the center. We are right there. So the delivery patterns are gonna be quick. But we do use them a lot, but it's not because, um, we're lazy. It's because they are actually really good at what they do.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
So.
They'll cost the most appropriate, the same of the game.
Absolutely. So it's my hope in our next meeting that you may come and introduce us to a new library director. And faculty干部, wouldn't that be awesome?
I'm not sure if we'll be able to introduce them yet because I'm not sure we'll be able to get anyone because of their, they're all professionals in a position similar to this.
In a position, okay.
I don't imagine anyone's gonna leave without giving at least a month to six weeks, if not eight weeks.
And that's it.
Because it's just such an important position.
Okay.
Can, hopefully, at least at that time, we'll be able to say, you know, who we've chosen and this person has notified their employer that they're coming to Auburn and we can talk about it. But, um, it may be December or January.
Awesome.
Be late December or January.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that at the next meeting, we could finally resurrect those series of questions that you, Steve and I had put together about the strategic plan with the tactics.
Yes, great. That's great.
Because this, just tonight, I feel like, I'm like, check, 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 right? You know, so. And, and, and I'm browsing this, cause I, for some reason have, which handed a, a copy of this,
And I haven't looked at that.
But I'm, I'm looking back at all of the feedback from the survey conducted. And again, seeing, you know, people want more, more quiet, you know, study desks and there's more smaller spaces where they aren't sitting on, if one person that is able, you're not gonna sit there, especially if they're getting tutor. So desk space gets taken up fast, right? So, but I'm reading things in here that are just like clicking with what we're talking about. And I think it would just be really meaningful if we're gonna ask for another survey to say, hey, you know what? Last time you did this, we really, we did the things that you suggested. So like, your feedback really matters. I think tying this to that feedback, I mean, that's everything to you feel like your feedback.
And, and I think maybe if that would be the direction of our next meeting, I always ask for agenda items from everybody. But I think that that should be like the point of our December meeting is to get update from you. And then if everyone would look at it and I can get you a higher.
Do we have copies? Do we have more copies? We have one, so.
Yeah, we also have it up on the website. It.
Okay, good.
Yeah, but I can.
I need to pull that.
No, no, absolutely. But I think if we can all, before the next meeting, and I'll prompt everybody and I will provide the meeting notes that, I mean, the meeting minutes that I missed tonight. But to prep everyone to just really look it over. And then if we're, if we need to ask you any updates, you'll have it. You'll know what we're talking about. And then we'll, we can do the shape, our final meeting of the two thousand twenty-four year, kind of planning for February.
Mm, it's on that.
Yeah.
And we, we usually break from December, you know, December's the last meeting, but February, but then we opt, if we do want to have subcommittee meetings during that time, we vote on that. So, um, just, this has been a really great meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm really grateful to you, Dory, to Ed and to the entire team. Like we just feel.
Team.
I just, we've been talking about this for years and it feels great that it's coming into fruition with your leadership. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So our next scheduled meeting will be here in the Marion Room, uh, Wednesday, December fourth at six PM. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. So we are adjourning at the second, sorry, at seven eleven for the record. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.